Commissioner Schröder.
Here.
Commissioner Potts.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Alba.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Platter.
Here.
Commissioner Grable.
Here.
Chair Scott. Here. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any additions or subtractions to the meeting agenda? I would note that we are going to continue the discussion on residential redevelopment to a future meeting. Cindy Larson was unable to be here this evening, and so we're going to reschedule on a time when she can be here. Other than that, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second.
Sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The meeting agenda is approved. Next up is community comment. This is the portion of the meeting where we entertain comments from members of the public on items that are not on the agenda this evening, and seeing no members of the public in the audience, I'm going to jump to the conclusion that there are no comments from the community. And we'll move on to reports and recommendations. We have two items for this evening. The 2014 work plan, and then some discussions on planning commission bylaws. And so on the work plan, let me just lead off the work plan discussion. Commissioner Platter and I attended the city council work session on, was it October 1st, Carrie? I think so.
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday, and if you haven't been to one of these work sessions on the work plans, they're interesting events because representatives from all of the boards and commissions in the city come and share their work plans for the coming year, which leaves each board and commission approximately six and a half minutes to present their entire year's worth of work to the council and ask questions. But it's actually quite interesting because it gives, it gives me anyway, an appreciation for how much the council's got on their plate, what a broad spectrum of topics they have to be familiar with, and reminds me of the importance of us really providing them with expertise and with the experience that we provide them as we advise them on issues related to zoning and planning. So it's a good reminder. I gave a brief overview of the work plan that we approved at our prior meeting. There was some discussion on the sustainability items, as well as monitoring the residential redevelopment standards that we had recommended and they had adopted. One of the items that we received some kind of feedback on was thinking in terms of drainage that we taught, we, as we're looking back on how the drainage items are working, that we, we also consider how we can do better in terms of infiltration on drainage as opposed to just transporting water off of sites, and that we have to be thinking from, and I think that really overlaps with the sustainability items, how we can work on those kinds of things.
Yeah, there's definitely a concern on the overall capacity of the city's storm sewer system.
Right.
Along in there, and certain areas in particular, and not just draining it to the street is not necessarily the right thing to do versus some onsite infiltration or something.
Exactly. That was the concern that was brought up. So I think as we, as we kind of track that, we want to be keeping that in mind, capacity issues as well. So as we gave the overview, one of the things I wanted to come back and, and report that although not officially adopted yet, I think Carrie, the council adopts these work plans later in the fall at subsequent meetings, but, you know, there was favorable reaction to the work plan, and I think we should be moving forward on the assumption that these are the tasks that we're going to be tackling. And so I wanted to just have an opportunity tonight to encourage members, what I'm going to suggest we do is really try to divide up and, and have different folks on the commission take, take the lead on different segments of this, and as, over the next couple of weeks, if you can take a look at the items that are on the work plan and identify any areas that you might in particular be interested in participating. We're going to have to make, you know, take actions and make decisions as, as an entire group, but I think it's, it's going to be helpful to have smaller committees or working groups that can take the lead on particular issues and frame those for the rest of the commission to make a decision on. So take a look through some of those items and see if there are ones that interest you, and just shoot me an email, and we can talk at our next meeting about assigning folks to various responsibilities. I also want to leave open for comment if anybody has any reactions on that or thoughts about how we ought to proceed with that 2014 work plan. Crickets. Commissioner Carr.
I think that's a good approach to assign small teams, maybe two each, working with Carrie on the individual issues, and we'll make quicker progress.
Yeah, I know one of the, one of the items we have on the work plan is trying to tackle the, a small area plan for the Wooddale and Valley View commercial area. I think that'd be an ideal time for us to try a working group, which might be a couple of commissioners, but then find people in the neighborhood who, you know, are part of the fabric of that neighborhood to participate in leading a vision for the future, and be a nice way to kind of do some outreach, but also put some framework to that. Commissioner Potts.
A question about this. Mr. Chair, under the small area plan, there's a line item for, a budget for work to be done by a consultant. So I assume if we're going to volunteer for one of these efforts and want to suggest a budget and a use for that budget, that needs to be part of the approval by year end. We should include that in our interest of, you know, in leaving one of the sections.
I, I think it's a great question. Carrie, any thoughts on that?
There is some monies left over in the old Tiffrith district in this area, so it's not necessarily a budget item that's in the council budget right now, but there is monies available for that, for the study. So depending on the scope, we have a little flexibility there.
But I think Commissioner Potts was asking more broadly, you know, is the work plan in addition to being, you know, framing the focus of our time, is it also a budgeting tool for the council to the extent there's expenditures we see might be useful or necessary on certain topics? Is that an expectation of the council?
They haven't really discussed that in, in any detail. I, I think, leave it to the recommendation of the planning commission. We come with the working group or the planning commission as a whole, put together a work plan for how we want to proceed, similar to what we did with the Grandview, a scope of work, and then present that to the council for their approval.
So I think certainly sooner rather than later is always good if we're trying to catch 2014 funding.
Sure. Thank you.
Other thoughts on, on the work plan? All right. So the next item on the agenda is planning commission bylaws. There are a couple of items that, that I want to discuss with the commission, and since we didn't have other items on the agenda, I wanted to add these to the agenda tonight. And let me, I'm going to take them in reverse order if I can, taking the second one first, which is voting and recommendations. For several months now, we have, we've been engaging in a practice where on quasi judicial decisions, when we get applications before us, we work our way toward a motion, and then we take a vote on the single motion, and then we end it there. And so it sometimes leaves us in the awkward situation, I think we had at the last meeting, where we had a motion to deny that failed on a three to five vote, and then that was it. Now, in fairness, on that particular item, we also had a motion to approve that failed to get a second. So we were perhaps a little stuck, but what I wanted to visit with you all about is whether we want to continue that practice of only having one motion on an item, or whether we should be basically doing our best to try to reach a motion that is an affirmative motion, so we're sending an affirmative recommendation on, to the council, not necessarily to approve, but that we've got a majority of the commission either recommending approval or recommending denial on any given petition, as opposed to not recommending something. Commissioner Platter.
Well, isn't not recommending something saying something as well?
Well, that's the, that is exactly the discussion we had back in February, and, and we decided to go on this path, but I worry, I saw some very furrowed brows when we, when we ended our consideration of the subdivision matter on a, a motion to deny that failed on a three to five vote, and people said, so what does that mean exactly?
Means there's no clear direction.
Well, and I think that's my concern. Commissioner Grable.
Yeah, that's the problem. A motion to not, a motion, a motion to deny X is not the same as a no vote on a motion to approve X.
Right.
And it's, our job is to rule on certain items that come before the commission and to provide advice to the council. And it seems to me if you vote to deny X, you're not giving the kind of advice to the council that they really ought to expect from us, nor what the city ought to expect from us. This is, this is a deliberative body. If you don't want to vote for something, don't vote, vote no. There's nothing wrong with voting no, but don't say, don't vote yes on a motion to deny because I don't know what that says.
Commissioner Carr.
Well, typically, I mean, applicants coming for, well, a variance, for example, and normally wouldn't we phrase it as a motion to approve that, and then you either vote, it either passes or it doesn't. I don't know how, I can't recall the circumstances of why we ended up with a motion to deny. That's just the, it's just the reverse of a motion to approve.
Well, I think it actually can, can go either way, but the question is if you have a motion to approve and it fails, is that the same as denying? I would suggest that there might be a motion to approve with some conditions that might get, that might get a majority of the votes, even though the initial motion to approve didn't get them, and that we, we ought to work toward a more precise fashioning so that we have a majority of people supporting a motion that acts on what's before us. Commissioner Grable.
If we, if we don't vote, if we don't vote on something, then time limits are, start to run, and action, a failure of the city to take action on an application after a certain period of time will result in the action being de facto approved. A motion to deny is not the same, is not the reverse of a motion to affirm, in my judgment. It's not a motion at all. If a motion fails to receive a second, and there's no further action, then the matter dies. That's, that's, that's a legal thing.
So the question is, the question is whether we ought to, we have kind of taken the practice that we will, we'll get to a motion, and then that vote will be the end of the matter. And the question is whether we ought to keep going until we have a majority voting in favor of a motion, whether that motion be to deny or to approve, should we keep going until we find a motion that can get a majority support? Commissioner Carr.
If you, let's say that there was a motion to approve something, it failed. I don't know exactly what the procedure is, but could then you have further discussion and someone make a new motion? I would assume that you could do that.
Yep.
So we could at least have a discussion. If there's a failure of a motion to approve, we could follow that by some discussion to see if there are any amendments that would be offered to that original motion that might make it more palatable and that would get the majority vote that's required.
Commissioner Forrest.
I don't think it's whether it's a motion to approve or a motion to deny that's its issue. It's when we don't, when-
Have majority support.
It doesn't infer, by not voting and passing whatever motion it is, there's not a direct inference that if we don't approve a motion to deny that we want to approve. So it's, that's where it comes into place, is when we vote no on whatever motion it is, and there's no, nothing affirmative. But it's not, it's not necessarily a bad, I don't think being in a tie is any problem at all. I think that clearly reflects where we're at as a commission, except, I don't know where that would land us, but the variance where this is the last body unless there's an appeal.
Well-
Doesn't the motion fail on a tie?
Yeah, it fails on a tie. I, I think the tie is a fair point as an exception. I mean, if we, if we have an even number like we do tonight, we have eight voting members, if, if it ends in four to four, you know, I don't think there's much we can do about that. But my question is if it, you know, if a motion fails, shouldn't we keep going until we get a motion that actually passes so that the council knows that we are affirmative, majority of us are affirmatively recommending? Commissioner Platter.
But when it, we're an advisory to the council, so ultimately the council is going to make that decision.
Yeah.
And I understand in most cases it would be definitely best to give them away our vote on it, but is it always necessary if they're the final vote on something?
Well, and I guess what I would say-
You know, if it's still going to them-
It's still going to them, and the question is, what is the recommendation that's going to them?
Yeah, I'm not saying it's right that we didn't recommend either way, but having said that, is, is that okay, though, if they're ultimately the, we're only advisory to them, they're ultimately the decision makers on it?
If, if we're advisory, we ought to give them advice. You can't, you can't have a body that doesn't do anything. And voting to, a motion to deny-
Well, you can have a-
Abduces, abduces responsibility.
Well, you can, we could move to, eight of us could vote eight to nothing in, to recommend denial of something, and that's taking action. We're recommending that they do not adopt that. What I'm saying is if that motion fails, a recommendation to denial, shouldn't there be a follow-up until you get somebody who says-
That's part of the problem. There's no, there's nothing left.
So that then they know what it is.
What does that mean?
Right.
A motion to deny fails, so what does that mean? That's not an approval.
It does not necessarily mean it's approval. Yeah, because I don't think all of us-
It might not be a denial, but it's not an approval. And we're here to, we are here to rule on the matters that come before us.
And I, I think we do a terrific job of people explaining how they're thinking about things, and that's helpful for the council as they review the minutes or watch the meetings. But it also underlines your point that just because everybody votes against the motion to deny didn't mean everybody was ready to approve it either.
I'll tell you, I, I was on the bylaws committee when we did these bylaws, and, you know, the thought never occurred, I, I think, to anybody on the bylaws committee that the issue would come up. And I did not look at Robert's Rules before I came to the night, tonight's meeting, and I really should have, but I've got a feeling if we go to Robert's Rules, it says you, you have an affirmative vote one way or another.
Yeah, I started to, and then I, several hours later, I ran out of time. Commissioner Schroder.
Well, I think I'm actually in the position tonight of agreeing with Floyd. And no one's here to see it.
Yeah, Jackie, make a note of that, please.
I think we need to keep going until we get to an affirmative recommendation. Doesn't mean we have to approve or deny, I'm just saying we need to come to a conclusion.
That's a good way to put it, an affirmative recommendation. It doesn't mean that it is approving or denying, but it's majority of us. Now, if we're stuck at a four to four, I suppose there's nothing we can do about that.
The tie fails. If we make, if, if a motion is made and people don't, it often says, you know, I move the approval subject to the staff findings. Somebody seconds that, and then somebody else will say, well, but don't we ought to add some conditions so there's a motion to amend?
Yeah.
And you get to the discussion, and you finally get to a point where the motion is what most people would like the motion to be, and then they can vote it yes or no. Maybe you don't like the idea at all, and you vote no, but maybe you like how the thing finally evolved, and you vote yes. That way, the city council knows that we've considered a matter, we've considered the staff report, we've had discussion, we've tweaked it as we see fit based on the input from the public and the discussion, and they know what we did. Otherwise, they don't know what we did.
Chair Scott.
Commissioner Fisher.
So I think if you go back to the last meeting, where I think Commissioner Grable had one or two motions, I think, in that meeting that didn't get a second. I, I think one, my, my experience, I'm no Robert's Rules expert, but I think, I've, I've been in meetings before where somebody seconded a motion and then turned around and voted against that motion, which is completely legitimate. And I think if we could have done that over, you know, it probably would have been nice for someone to just second the motion, have our discussion, take a vote, we probably would have had a definitive answer, and we probably would have added amendments or whatever. But I think we, I think we shouldn't be afraid to second a motion-
Yeah, that's a good point.
-to just get us to a decision. You know, there was a lot of, there was a lot of wondering, you know, where am I going to go on this? I think we all felt that way, and maybe we just enjoyed the sound of crickets after Floyd made these motions, but I, I think had, had that happened, we probably wouldn't even be having this discussion. So it's just something we should think about.
And I think that's a fair point for those thinking about seconding. You should be very clear on the fact that that does not obligate you to vote in favor of the motion just because you've seconded.
Oh, it does, just tee it up and discuss it.
In fact, though, it does, I think, in the arcania of Robert's Rules, it would qualify you to make a motion to reconsider at a later time, because you're in the losing or the, no, it's voting against it. It's voting against it would be the reconsider.
People who vote in, in the affirmative have, have the ability to reconsider.
I was just thinking, we tend to start over with new motions. We, we might make an amendment, a friendly amendment or whatever, and then we start over on new motions, rather than going through and somebody puts forward an amendment, then that should be voted on by, I mean, technically that would be, the amendment is voted on, and then you go back to the motion and vote on it, and each amendment, and you could go through that all night long, too. But I think streamlining it the way we do usually works very well. It's just that sometimes we aren't going to come to a, a rapid conclusion that people feel comfortable voting on, and, and I agree that, I think then the discussion continues until we come up with a solid motion with whatever is approved at that point, and then we vote on it as a group.
And I guess what I would suggest maybe is a safety valve is that we could by a majority vote, make a motion, second a motion, and vote in favor of a motion to discontinue consideration of a matter because we can't reach, because we cannot reach a conclusion about it.
That's, that's a motion to table. Pardon me? That is, it's a motion, it's a motion to table.
Go ahead.
Where things get complicated, for me, anyway, at the last meeting, we had a motion to, it was tied together, the subdivision and a variance, and for me, I didn't see that the criteria for a variance were met, but I wasn't against the subdivision necessarily either, so I voted nay on that one. So I think sometimes when we get these more complicated situations where we're tying together different issues, some that we would normally be the final body to see it unless there's an appeal, and somewhere we aren't, that that's when it gets a little bit messier because, to get a clear recommendation that maybe doesn't necessarily reflect the entire discussion viewpoints.
And maybe that's a time when somebody has to make a motion to just take one of them at a time, and, you know, that you move the subdivision, and then we wait to act on the variance, and, or the chair figures it out. So maybe we could practice now with a motion on how we ought to proceed with this item. Crickets.
I was just going to say, maybe I didn't understand it before, but knowing that you can second a motion, I mean, you're not obligated-
Yeah, that is helpful to-
That, to me, that is a very helpful thing to understand.
So we at least can have discussion on that motion, debate on the motion.
Right.
So I sense the, I sense that folks are prepared to move forward with a practice that has us working until we, until at least a majority of us conclude we can't reach any kind of consensus. I don't know whether we should try and incorporate that into the bylaws, or is that just a practice, or what?
It's a practice.
Practice.
Okay. So do you, is that, do people feel like we should make a motion on that? Should we, or we've just reached a, an understanding among the eight of us?
It might be our last just basic understanding.
That's right.
Yeah.
Nonblinding MOU doesn't know.
I'd make a motion that my track record may lose.
You might not get a second. And on that, on that point of Robert's Rules, it's also my practice as the chair not to, I, I don't think it's appropriate for the chair to either make or second motions, so I, because I think I'm in a role of facilitating the discussion, and I don't think I ought to be making the motion or seconding it, so.
Is that a, is that a rule somewhere?
It depends, there are some-
I see in the bylaws, it actually says you can.
Yeah, there are some kind of interpretations of Robert's Rules depending on the circumstances and the type of body that you're talking about, where it's not permitted, but it's, it's just, I just think as a matter of form, it's not appropriate for the chair to be, there's a lot of other ways that the chair can influence the discussion without directly making a motion or second a motion. Okay, so then the second item is the ex parte communications. This is a portion of the bylaws that we, we adopted Floyd and Commissioner Carpenter put together the, our bylaws, and Steve Brown was on that as well. So it's been three or four years, I think, since we put that together. We had quite a discussion, I think Commissioner Fisher was the chair of the commission at that time, and we had a, a long discussion about whether we as a commission ought to adopt a rule that says on quasi judicial matters, we're not going to have contact individually with interested parties outside of our meetings. And we concluded that that was the right thing to do, and I wanted to check back in and see how that's working for folks. The one place that I thought that we struggled with it a little bit in this past year was when we had the Byerly's PUD, and by its very nature, planned unit development is kind of a, a hybrid between a quasi judicial and a legislative discussion, and I think there were a lot of folks who wanted to have some kind of a negotiation with the applicant about different features that we would have liked to see. And so I wonder if that's something, I wanted to bring it up with you all and see if you had thoughts, first of all, in general, about how the ex parte rules are working, and then secondly, if there's anything about that circumstance that you think we ought to handle differently when we're doing planned unit developments. Commissioner Platter.
My thought is, doesn't the sketch plan handle portions of that? Or you, that's a discussion, that is before the, everybody, but doesn't that play into and, and maybe supersede what, if there's something out of here on that? That's kind of the way I've looked at the sketch plan review, is it's, it's a way to talk through things about what we want.
So that can constitute that kind of negotiation, but it's done out in public where everybody can see it.
I just think that if you do it any other way than like right here, where everything's happening in front of the cameras, in front of the citizens, it just lends itself to people saying, because PUD by its nature is a negotiation, so basically what we'd be saying is we'd rather just take that negotiation offline, and I think that's exactly the wrong message. It really needs to be happening here so everyone in the community can participate in their own way.
I mean, even if it is sketch plan, it's still, even though there isn't public input, they can hear the discussion, they can see what's happening along with that.
Commissioner Schroder.
I was just going to say that there have been times when this body has decided that certain members, certain representative, representatives of the commission should meet with developers and city staff to- and city staff to try and come to some conclusion on an issue. How is that characterized relative to ex parte communications?
And I think technically, that is not—that's outside of what—you know, that's a really good point, that we do sometimes want to do that, where we get to a place where it looks like we're not going to be satisfied with an application, but we think with some modifications, it might meet our needs, and we sometimes appoint a couple of members to meet with the applicant and staff. Is—are we okay with that? If we're okay with that, I think we need to make that exception in the bylaws, because as I read it right now, that's not permitted.
I think it's not—
Maybe Floyd?
It's not 12B.
As the—
Communication between members outside of meetings. It seems to me, as long as there's not a quorum present, and there wouldn't be—a there would not be a quorum present with a small subgroup.
But I—but I think the point of the subgroup is—the subgroup is meeting with the applicant, then.
Right.
And it—12B definitely addresses this issue of, you know, members can speak among themselves, so long as there's not a quorum in between meetings, but the ex parte rules prohibit us from engaging with the applicant, or for that member—for that matter, members of the public who are interested in it.
I think there should be something—if we're going to do that—I think it's a good thing, in many cases, like the Slidell property was one of them.
Right.
That there is something that allows that. You know, however, that's—if it's a majority, the planning commission has to vote on it, you know, versus just appointing, there's a vote on it, per se, that that would be a reasonable thing to put in here, to avoid the perception of something like that.
Yeah. Commissioner Potts.
And looking at A, paragraph one, we basically describe ex parte communications and talk about that's an individual seeking to influence the decision of the planning commission. What we're discussing here is basically the reverse of that, so I think we could define this meeting—and these meetings we've described, you know, as another forum, and with city staff present, it's a different situation.
And that, I think, would be a good place to put it. We could add language in that item one that would just exclude, you know, the formal appointment of a couple of members by the commission to meet with staff and an applicant as a—as not being an ex parte communication. Commissioner Fisher.
I mean, I think it's fine, we can—we can add that. I'm not sure we need to. I don't think it harms anything by adding it, but I don't think it's necessary. And the reason I say that is—the whole point of ex parte communication and having the rules we have is that you're not out there, unknown to anyone else, having these discussions. In this case, this body is saying, we would like to have these two commissioners, or this commissioner, meet with staff and this proponent to further this discussion and bring it back here. So not only are you openly telling everyone what's happening, but they're coming back and reporting on what was talked about. So there's nothing about that that's sort of outside the realm of the community. I—you know, I think it's fine to formalize it, but I wouldn't want to get too specific. I mean, just say—you know, it would have to be more generic and say, you know, in cases where the planning commission intentionally, you know—I think the key is that you always have staff present, and that's sort of the consistent piece of it.
Commissioner Carr.
Well, the bylaws as written, they define what ex parte communications are. They define the exclusions, but then really what's prohibited is ex parte communications involving quasi-judicial matters. Well, I believe what you're talking about now is more in the legislative area.
Well, certainly—the PUD is a difficult case, because it's kind of got a foot on each side. It is—it is a quasi—it's a legislative action in the sense that we are changing the zoning code to adopt basically a code for that particular location. But it is quasi-judicial in the sense that it's only one applicant coming to ask you to do something in particular for them. So I had thought—my lawyerly mind had thought that with PUDs, maybe it's not really a quasi-judicial decision, maybe that's how—we don't have to worry about it. But I—I think it has—I think members of the public would consider that to be an application by an individual applicant that's coming in front of us and asking us to make a decision, and I—I think they would feel like these rules ought to apply to that. Commissioner Forrest.
I think it would be nice to—I think in order to maximize the versatility of our PUD ordinance, that it's a good idea to have some negotiations along the way in certain circumstances. And I think—I think some communities actually have committees that work with developers on these kinds of things. So for me, I would love it if—if such a group is appointed, that they come back with written findings and written recommendations, that then we, as a group, can discuss and consider, rather than just they go meet with and report in the meeting. But if they have a list of, okay, these are some things we think that we, as a group, may want to recommend, these are things a developer wants, here's a possible solution. So if there's something that is—that there is just a record, whether it's a simple list that is available for the public if need be, and I like the idea of staff being there as well, but just that there's something for us to work from once they come back.
And I think that's—that would—you know, staff is—that's a really important part of staff being there. So the next staff report, when it comes back after that meeting, includes the fact that we met with and discussed X, Y, Z, and these modifications were made, and—
I think, too, it helps us see what—we're—we're coming from and how we're moving forward to getting what we want as a community, too. Because instead of just, oh, here's a new plan, and a couple of members of the planning commission agreed to it, along with the developer and the staff, so it might—it must be good. You know, it's nice to see, this is what we discussed, this is why we did it, and then it can—if need be, we can have further discussion of it here. And I—so—for me, it'd be nice to have just a brief written summary if we implement that kind of a situation.
Commissioner Carr.
Well, if we do consider that a quasi-judicial communication, then the bylaws would require that that be disclosed on the record at the commencement of the public hearing, to which such communication pertains. So if, in fact, the small group has been designated to work with the applicant on the PUD, that should be disclosed at the beginning of the hearing, and the details of that discussion disclosed, if we consider that quasi-judicial, because that's what the bylaws require.
Right, unless we were to change the bylaws and, you know, expressly authorize these kinds of items.
I—I think—I would not make an exception. I think the public's entitled to know if the planning commission individual members have met with the applicant, and if they have, what the results were of that discussion, and if there was any direction that was given, I would think the public would have an interest in knowing that. Because, again, it's a smaller group. I don't think it creates any conflicts of interest that would cause the commissioners to have to recuse themselves—recuse themselves, excuse me—from the hearing, but I think it's something the public would be interested in knowing. If we make it an exclusion, that would not have to be disclosed.
Well, I—I guess I was pursuant to the earlier discussion, what I was suggesting is that we would—you know, that in the definition of ex parte communications, you would lay out the fact that ex parte communications do not include members of the commission who are appointed by—who are formally appointed by the commission to meet with staff and the applicant on an item.
I think we're in heated agreement.
I mean, either way, yeah. Either way, you have—either way, you have a disclosure, because the commission is saying you— Commissioner—go ahead, Commissioner Carr.
Well, I don't know that I agree with that. I mean, there is a disclosure, I guess, of a general nature, but the nature of the discussions and what the results of the discussions were aren't necessarily disclosed.
Commissioner Grable.
Yeah. When the—when the discussion started, I guess I thought it was okay, but the more we talk about it, the less inclined I am to think it's a good idea to have, on an issue like PUD, or any of the—what really are quasi-judicial matters, to have a subcommittee of this group discuss it, for a couple of reasons. One, I have—I have come to these meetings with a fairly firm idea of what I think about a particular project, and through the discussion, my mind will change a couple of times before I reach a final decision, because I value the discussion that goes on, and I'm—I'm interested in what—really am interested in what Commissioner Schroder says.
And he is interested in what you say.
And all of the members—and all of the members of the commission, as well as the public. And if three go and meet with the developer, then that's—the—the content of that discussion doesn't really make it to the commission as it would if the discussion was taking place here. Well, I mean, if we had, for example—if we had a subcommittee of three people, go talk to the people about the apartment building going—proposed for the furniture site, and they came back and said, wow, we've discussed this with the developer, and this is what the developers agreed to do, and we're all set to go with this and we go forward, the public would go crazy. You know? It just—it just wouldn't—the optics aren't very good on that—on a deal like that. And—and we miss the benefit of the discussion.
Commissioner Potts.
I was involved in one of these such meetings on the Slidell property. I guess, Staff, maybe you can remind me. I think public could have attended that meeting in the mayor's conference room.
Probably not. It wasn't noticed as a—
Well, yeah, it wasn't—I guess it wasn't noticed, but we did announce we were doing it. But I guess what's on my mind is, if we've got some members of the commission that have certain areas of expertise, and/or trying to transfer some of that knowledge to an applicant for their benefit and for the city's benefit ultimately, that's what this is about, in my mind. And so I'd hate to see us cut that off.
And the question that I think Commissioner Carr and Commissioner Grable are raising is, why can't we do that in the context of this meeting? You know, of a full meeting where we can tell them what we think, and tell them, you need to go away, work with staff for two weeks, and come back to us with these kinds of changes? I mean, I'm—I don't want to speak for you if I'm not being accurate. Commissioner Platter.
Well, I would—I would say to that is—to Commissioner Potts' point, is there are some nuances in the design, for example, that would—I don't want to say they're not relevant to people, but they'd only be relevant to the people maybe designing it. The end product would be—you know, would have that discussion yet, but there may be nuances in there that—this would be getting into the details, and I'm fine with everyone knowing that, but it's a lot of things that are—really don't mean a lot to the end product necessarily, because it's a discussion, so—
Commissioner Fisher.
This is where it gets tricky.
Yeah.
So particularly for the folks in the—maybe the design world, you know, our role here as the planning commissioners is to say yes or no. When we have a sketch plan, you can get a little bit more nuance, but there are times where you're sitting up here and like, this is really bad. This could be so much better. And sometimes—I've been involved in a few of these—these type of meetings, and it's—it's a little bit of a different ballgame when you just come in there and say, look, this is, I think, what we're frustrated with. And you get out a pen, and you go, you know, this—it's—it's really awkward and kind of inappropriate to do it here. You know, you got—they get consultants sitting out there with them that they're paying money to, and you're on TV and everything. It's just an awkward thing. Whereas if you sit down, you have city staff, and say, this is what, you know, I think people are going to have issues with or having issues with, have you thought about this? And whatever you kind of talk through, they can end up coming back with, you know, a very different kind of deal. Now, I think it's incredibly important that—so you can—you can tell the public, here's what we talked about, but you don't have to tell them, I grabbed the doggone drawing, and I did it for that. You know what I'm saying? It's—and I'm not saying that that's happened, maybe, but—but do you understand the difficulty in that? And I don't know if you could ever get to that up here. So what you end up having is a very frustrating situation, where you get kind of milquetoast kind of projects, and you try to say, I don't like this, or I don't like that, but you're really kind of limited. And—and so, the thing with the PUD is, it should be our opportunity to get what we want. And—and so, to have that opportunity to do that, I would hate to lose that entirely.
Commissioner Forrest, and then Commissioner Carr.
I'd like us to explore if there's a possibility, because I agree, I think that this forum, it's very awkward to get into some of the nitty-gritty that really bugs us, whether it's that certain criteria aren't clear as far as measuring energy efficiency, or whether it's why doesn't—how can this better connect with the sidewalks and things like that? But I would like to explore the possibly—this is just one brainstorm thing—of being able to appoint members, perhaps having—because it's not a common thing, and PUDs, there should be a lot that goes into it, so that we do get what we want as well. If—perhaps there could be a work session prior to this meeting, including the appointed members and staff, that is noticed along with this meeting for those rare occasions, but that we come up with some way of—of doing it outside of the formal meeting thing, and then the public could attend if they want to, they could see what's being said. But I still—and then they can hand us their written conclusions at the end, and that that becomes part of the record as well.
Commissioner Carr.
Well, I know—I understand where we're coming from. Sometimes we have presentations, applications that come to us, and they're not as well-defined as we would like. I think there's a better way of doing that than having one or two individuals meet with the applicant, and that would be to adopt some guidelines in some of these areas. Maybe that's not possible. I have full confidence in Kerry, when he works with these folks, that he understands what our expectations are, but perhaps we haven't fully defined all our expectations. But I would rather have us agree, as a planning commission, what those expectations are and guidelines, have Kerry work with the applicant, but when it comes to actually making the decisions and fine-tuning a proposal, that that be handled by the entire commission. Because, again, it's a quasi-judicial type of decision that affects legal rights of individuals. I think that might be better from a legal standpoint, to protect all of us, and not have some claims later on that came up, that there was some undue influence that maybe some of us are not aware of.
Commissioner Grable.
What is a bit troubling to me about this—the direction this discussion is taking right now, though, is we're talking—starting to talk about my personal feelings about the design of a particular product—of a particular project. And I don't know that there's any justification in the law for the commission to be making a ruling or a decision based on personal judgment about particular aspects of a project. You know, does it fit on the lot? Does—the plan would say it's in character with the neighborhood, whatever that means, but a developer and the public is entitled to notice of what kind of the standards are, and the standards can't be based on, gosh, I don't think it looks as good as it could look.
Commissioner Schroder.
I think the—the—what I'm struggling with is, how do you get this better product of design? And I think Commissioner Forrest had the right idea. We—we do sketch plans, sitting up here on the dais, and it's—it's very much a one-way. It's not even sketching. They're presenting an idea, and we go down the line, and sometimes we go down the line twice, giving a reaction. And it's not the iterative process that I think we wanted the sketch plan process to be. So if—if we could just say that all sketch plan reviews, since they're non-binding on our part, happen in a workshop. When we have a sketch plan come forward, or a PUD, we take it upstairs, and public is invited, and we sketch. We lay the plan out in front of us, and we can draw on it, they can draw on it, and we come to conclusions, but non-binding conclusions. It's a discussion. It's what the sketch plan process was supposed to be getting us. Right now, it's like one more not really so formal, but not really informal step in a PUD process.
I think you're right about that. That's what we wanted the sketch plan process to be, but I think the powers that be told us it couldn't be that way. And so, you have to have—you have to have—you have to have the public notice and the formal process.
Well, we could still do that, but it would be in a work session.
We could do that in a work session.
Do it in a work session, a noticed work session.
I think the feedback we got was, you can't make it a required component, because then you risk the—being included in the timeline, that you're starting the clock running. But—but I think we could do it in a—and the more I'm hearing the discussion—this is what I think this group does so well. I'm—I'm hearing this discussion, and I'm—I'm kind of—while I was initially—I know it has worked in the past, to appoint a couple of members— it has worked in the past to appoint a couple of members, I also think our ex parte rules have really been a great step forward for this body to be saying to the public, you know, everything you know about this is going to be out here in the public. And that doesn't mean we can't have more informal sessions and do them around a table, but it's open to the public and people can come. But I agree that we kind of have, the sketch plans have become this just kind of serial comment without much back and forth. It works better with some than others, but it could be even better. And maybe that's a way to accomplish it.
Commissioner Platter?
Just seems like it's kind of, designers are on one side here and the lawyers on the other side.
Isn't that funny?
Well, maybe it's not always that way, but it's just in our, and speaking from the design standpoint, it's, that's in our nature to just kind of look at things and throw out ideas and see what sticks and, you know, that's just how we work in many cases versus having something just presented and that is what it is. So it's...
And I have, you know, as a, as a, you know, everyday kind of lawyer who still can't help but think like a lawyer, I have learned to understand that design is more than just what something looks like. So there's this kind of trying to figure out what's the best way to make things work, but also remembering that we have rules to apply to particular applications and we can't just make up the rules if we don't have them for an application or we're not going to be able to make our decision stick, so. Commissioner Forrest.
The one thing I like about having a work session ahead of time is that I think it also allows the public a little bit more notice as to what, what direction we're leaning. Because often when they come in to a public hearing, they may come with prepared comments or, or things are discussed after the public hearing portion is closed. This way, they do have an opportunity to have a little bit more insight in what's going on and how it may affect them.
How so with the work session?
Because if it's open to the public, these matters come up, they get discussed, maybe they're originally raised in the work session versus in our discussion after the public is, hearing is closed. That way, if we did use a process like this, and it, and it wouldn't be, again, we don't do that many PUDs right now, it would provide an opportunity for the public to get a bit more of a feel as far as what direction we're going with, with things. So for them not to, either to contact us with emails or as a group or to comment at the public hearing portion of the meeting.
Commissioner Platter?
I agree with that for the most part, but just devil's advocate, would you get unintended consequences by doing that? Are you, are you setting up another off-camera meeting that isn't as public?
What is it that you think she's suggesting we're doing?
What I understood she said was that we would have a work session offline, obviously public notice, but it wouldn't necessarily be on camera and there wouldn't be, for people to easily see the discussion, you had to be there to see it. I mean, I know it'd be in notes, but nevertheless, it would, that could be construed, I think, a little bit as something offline too. Maybe I'm mistaken on that.
Commissioner Fisher?
I guess, you know, I'm blending a number of different ideas here, so I like this idea, the best, the best part about those little subcommittees is that you actually got into the meat of what the design was all about and could try and affect an improvement. What would be better is if it wasn't just a couple of us. If all of us could get engaged in that level, we're all, we all have designers inside of us. You know, we all have...
Even us lawyers.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so, you know, I've heard all of you, we all have ideas that are worth mixing up and it makes the projects better. So let's say you did the work session. I don't know why we'd do it any different. It'd still be publicly noticed, it'd be a work session, and then the routine is that you bring, that happens before the planning commission meeting where you really get in and talk about it, but then you bring it, it's still probably the first thing on the agenda for the planning commission meeting here in front of the cameras. And the developer still puts the drawing up and talks about what we just talked about. So they're kind of reiterating what the discussion was, so everyone kind of sees it and hears it. Because the one, one thing that I do recall when we talked about sketch plan, the benefit of it is that it gave everyone a heads up.
Something's coming.
Something's coming. So they do need to see something and be able to react. And that should ultimately translate here in front of the cameras.
Commissioner Carr?
I think that's a good idea. I guess my question is this, I don't know that it has to be done in every instance because we've had a lot of plans come to us that are actually very good, I think. Now, I don't know, is a sketch plan review required in all instances?
No.
You know, if you had a sketch plan review, come to the planning commission and based on that sketch plan review, say, well, this plan needs a lot of work, we maybe can't give enough input at this meeting, maybe that would be the time to have this additional work session meeting that is public and that that's actually discussed at the planning commission level. We say, let's have a more informal meeting, it'll be public, where we can give you more feedback about the sketch plan. It's just an idea, only because if we have this informal work session for every single plan that comes before us, that's very time consuming, minutes have to be taken and it may not be necessary for every plan.
Commissioner Forrest?
I guess in my mind, I, I agree in part in that we could, as one option, limit this type of procedure only to PUD consideration versus development in general unless there's some major, I mean, if we wanted to limit it in any way, it's, it's just one possibility because that's an area where we have that option of, more of an option to negotiate the details with the developer. I'm not saying we should do that, but that's one way of limiting the work session experience, so to speak. The other, what was the other thing I was thinking about?
Well, on that point...
I think it'd be ideal if we could do, and I know we run up against a 60-day rule, but if there's a way of planning this out so that this work session is before a meeting prior to where it comes before the public. Because often we come up with suggestions or concerns that then the developer has to go back and work out or have their architect redraw or whatever before they come back. Or if it's a two-part approval process anyway, maybe that's enough, but just so that we all...
So the sketch plan is not on the clock?
I'm not talking sketch plan at all. I'm talking about this whole PUD consideration using a work session probably with the whole group or whatever as a possibility.
Oh, so on items, so if somebody came to us with a PUD that didn't have a sketch plan, they didn't come with a sketch plan before it?
Well, a sketch plan can be, it's not defined as, I think you could get, a sketch plan can be a back-of-the-napkin type situation more. It's, we don't like it when it is necessarily, but as far as they aren't investing that much money in it.
Right, we don't want them to be too far down the pike.
Right. And so, but when they bring their plan forward, sometimes even after a sketch plan, it's like, whoa, wait a minute, what are you doing here? Then we have great concerns and don't want to approve it that way, they end up going back anyway. I'm not saying it would eliminate the sketch plan thing, I'm just talking about PUD consideration where the city, you don't have the clear criteria of what goes on in that particular zoning area, and so we have that discussion at that time.
I will point out the times it's been used, I think have all been in residential, which doesn't have a PUD.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
The...
The kind of appointed.
Oh, right. Well, in the past, it's come up, right. Well, I'll say that, you know, one of the things that I want to be clear about is, as we're considering this notion of work sessions, I've been doing this for, I think, almost eight years now on camera, and I'm at the point where I don't notice that the camera's here. It doesn't make a difference to me whether I'm having this conversation with you on camera or whether I'm having it in another venue. But I do agree with the concept that the interaction between an applicant and us or between all of us around a table where people can chime in and out and we don't kind of take turns on the microphone is a whole different dynamic. And I'm entirely fine having the public be there and observing that, but I think there is some value in that. And that is, in essence, I think Commissioner Fisher said this, that's what we're, that's what we try to do when we appoint these couple of members, is try to convey the sense of the commission into that room. Why not just do it directly with a work session? I do think some summary is probably necessary. I think that the, that the council does rely a little bit on our, some council members on our televised sketch plan discussion in preparation for their sketch plan consideration. So Commissioner Fisher's idea of, you know, the sketch plan being a work session but followed by a regular meeting might be the, might be the way to go.
Commissioner Potts?
I was just going to build on that and I think, I really like the idea of a work session. I think that's a way, one key way to really realize the whole purpose of the sketch plan to bring the best possible complete projects to the city. And so often when we sit up here, you know, in this formal setting on television and put the applicant and their consultant on the spot, it, it becomes very clear to us that there are one or two things missing that would make all the difference between a mundane and a great project. And that it becomes kind of a confrontational thing when it's this formal. And we can get rid of all that through the, the work session. So I like that idea a lot. And to follow it then with a meeting, I think there are plenty of ways to capture how the suggestions we made are implemented in a project for, for council to see.
Commissioner Carr?
I just want to comment though, I don't think, at the end of the day, we're always going to be in agreement. I think the buyer lease development came back twice and I believe we denied that application or did not approve it because we were not satisfied. I thought it was the buyer lease.
Buyer...
You know what I'm saying? But at the end of the day, I mean, it's not a...
He doesn't disagree with you.
It's not going to, you know, we're not, probably not going to agree, it's not a beauty contest at the end of the day either. I mean, people will have different opinions about what is appropriate or, or not. So again, I just, I don't think we should deceive ourselves in thinking that the work sessions will necessarily resolve all the issues because there'll still be disagreement.
Well, so I hear two different things. I mean, I'm sensing a consensus on the notion of a work session for sketch plans. The question then is, how do we, you know, how if at all do we finesse this issue of PUDs after the sketch plan? And, you know, are there, I'm sorry, Commissioner Forrest, you're shaking your head at my suggestion that we've reached consensus.
I don't want a work session for sketch plans. I think that's the kind of thing where they can come forward and, and show everybody, the whole world and us, what their big idea is for a particular piece of land. But I think it's definition of sketch plan...
So you don't, so you don't want to do that in a sketch plan, you don't want to do that in a work session?
Not necessarily.
Followed by a presentation to us in a formal meeting?
Not necessarily. I'm not averse to it, it's okay. I just, from my, in my mind, I'm thinking more along the lines of formalizing something for PUDs. And I've learned that some communities actually have formal committees that meet to discuss each PUD to make sure that the city's needs, wants, whatever are being met. So if there's any way, we can do something like that.
So one of the things on our work plan is to try to create some standards around the things that we have noticed come up in every PUD. Sustainability, affordable housing, pedestrian, circulation, those kinds of things. And I suppose we can, you know, we can call for a work session on any of those, we could have, we could do that if we felt like that environment. You know, if we got to the place where we have gotten before on items, where we were thinking about appointing a couple of people. And the big breakthrough for me tonight is this, rather than this idea of appointing a couple of representatives or something short of a quorum to meet with the staff and the applicant, why not just have the whole commission meet with the applicant in a, in an environment that's going to be more conducive to an exchange of ideas and perhaps a change in direction? Commissioner Potts?
Just one point of order with that. I assume we could be, we could fall short of a quorum and still have this open exchange.
So the, the one question that remains is whether we want to institutionalize the notion of a work session for sketch plans. Because if we're going to do a work session for sketch plans, we'd, you know, unless we're going to follow what Commissioner Carr suggested, which is we start with the formal and if we feel the need for a work session, we do it after that, but...
Well, since we have not done these work sessions, I would recommend not institutionalizing it yet. Let's try it out. If you want to try one ahead of time, that's fine, or try one out after. There's been a sketch plan review presented to us. Let's try them maybe both ways, see how it works before we come up with a formal policy on it.
Commissioner Fisher?
I concur with Commissioner Carr. I think we should do what we're doing now. And when we get into that next situation where it just feels clunky, it's not really working, you know, the developer, the proponent at that point wants us to like it a lot. Because they're going to be coming back. So I would think they would be interested in, if we say, hey, you know, if you're interested, we're interested, we'll set up a, a work session before our next planning commission meeting and let's dig into this. And then we'll, you know, that way the public's listening to that, they're hearing it, they know there's going to be a meeting, and that'll be reported back at the next planning commission meeting. So, I mean, I think, I think that's a better way to do it than just assume we're going to have these work sessions every time.
So then the question is, you know, the next time a sketch plan comes in, do, you know, Kerry, do you want to tee that up in advance for us and we can just kind of have a brief discussion about whether we want to try and do a work session ahead of time or just take it on as a typical?
I can.
So, because you usually know a month ahead.
There, yeah, I do, and there's nothing in the pipeline.
Okay.
For me, it normally goes like this, I open the packet and I was like, meh, 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 meh. Pick up the hop.
The question is whether that's Friday or Tuesday night or Wednesday afternoon.
The one that's out there is the one, is, is the WIC site, and we've already had the, the sketch plan.
Well, and is the, is, do we get the sketch plan on the Pentagon Park? Did they come through?
Not yet, so that would...
That'll come. Now, that's an unusual one because we already kind of had the work session, which was with the council.
Right, and they are...
Now, not everybody was there, but...
Yeah, and they haven't developed any plans yet. They would just kind of like to continue that ongoing discussion with the planning commission before they do that.
Okay.
I was, I was just thinking the same thing, that, that this is a really appropriate place where staff can kind of give us the heads up, give the developer the heads up that, okay, you might run into the situation and the planning commission...
Extra tool.
...may suggest a work session as well. And, and it's a good role as a liaison for, for staff to both of our advantage.
Commissioner Grable?
If I might circle back to a point I made earlier, when all this process is done, however, it's still the developer's project, it's not our project. And if we don't like it for some personal reason because of the design, you know, I'm not sure if, if it's, if it's a good project for the city regardless of what particular aspect we don't like, chances are it's still going to go forward. They're the ones that are making the investment in the project and I think you have to have some respect for that.
Commissioner Fisher?
I'm going to agree and disagree at the same time. I agree that, you know, most, and this is the challenge, you know, when a, when a developer brings a project forward under normal zoning, whatever, you know, it's, there's a lot of frustrating moments because there are things that are falling short, but there's a limit of what we can demand or require with design. And I'm going to argue with PUD, we are customizing the zoning for that developer. And part of, there should be benefits to the city and to the developer for that to happen. Part of that is to get what is good and best for the city. Now, I'm not advocating that you go overboard and it's, you know, it's not about, to me it's not even about aesthetics because we all have different opinions about that. When I'm talking about design, I'm talking about doing the right thing on the site and whatever. I mean, it's, it's, it's not just the, the look. But my, my point is, it's a customized zoning for that piece of property, therefore you have, that's where we should, you know, get what we need.
We, we have more ability because it is customized zoning for a site. You're correct, we do have more ability, but there's still some constitutional issues about what we can tell a property owner and what we can't tell a property owner.
And that's the part that I agree with you on.
Then we're in agreement.
Or you don't disagree. Just to bring the, just to bring the conversation full circle. All right, so I have, I have way overstayed the, the 7:30 target that everyone had hoped for. I think, actually, I think this was really helpful, so thank you all for, I think we don't get this opportunity to kind of think through some of the procedural wickets we get stuck in from time to time and this is helpful. Taylor?
I just had a quick question. Would the work sessions be televised?
They would not, and I think part of the problem we have is despite our state-of-the-art tech... technology, when it was designed, people didn't think about the idea of televising and recording more of a roundtable discussion. We tried in the Grand View process to do that and it was really difficult. So it's more of a technological limitation than it is any kind of legal limitation. If I got that right, Carrie?
You'd have to sit up there.
Yeah, we'd have to sit up here, which kind of defeats the, this big barrier in between us and them, yeah. Good question, though. All right, anything further on those items? I think we have, Carrie, you have a good sense of where we're headed on that?
Commissioner Forrest.
This is, this is more just a, a comment on, regarding ex parte communications, where I've run into, I'd say, a less comfortable situation, not that I felt like it wasn't handled, but is when I'm out at a site and I'm looking at things and then I'm approached by neighbors or, or passersby and they want to discuss it. And basically, I mean, my answer is, I really can't discuss this in, with you at this point in time, please, please submit your comments, you know, send us an email and things to the whole group. But, but it is a situation that I, I find myself just, because they can keep talking at me and I don't want to listen, but yet I totally don't want to be off-putting either to, where they think the planning commission are just a bunch of, they aren't listening to anybody. So it's just a, it's just a comment about the fine line that we sometimes walk.
And I, what I do, and I do think that that's a challenge, what I try to tell people is the rationale behind the rule and that encourage them to come to the meeting or if they can't come to the meeting to submit something, and that our goal is really to make sure that every, that they know everything we're considering and that the applicant knows everything we're considering and that everybody who's interested can see that all of the things we're thinking about are right in front of us. Usually, I think, once people think through it, they kind of understand that. Okay, good discussion on that. Anything else on the bylaws? No? Good. Chair and commission member comments. The only comment I have for this evening is Carrie and I were talking today and we were trying to figure out if, if it was just a dream that I said that we shouldn't meet on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving or if I actually said that, and the same for the day after Christmas, but I don't know what all of your calendars say. Carrie, did you get a chance to check the?
I couldn't find anything in the official minutes.
What I would suggest is that we not meet on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and that we not meet on the day after, after Christmas. I don't, unless there's a terrible objection on that.
Do you want a motion? Do you want a motion for it?
Sure, that would be great.
I'll move that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
You don't have to vote for it just because your second is.
If there's a roll call on this, then there'll have to be a roll call on adjournment. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, so those, those meetings are off the calendar. If we need something else, we can address it as it comes up. Any other comments from commission members?
Commissioner Carr.
Commissioner Platter and I attended the Living Streets Advisory Group session, when was that? That was last Wednesday? Yes, last Wednesday. And we basically, the topic for that evening's session was basically public relations, and we talked about three subjects. What are the key messages that we want, would like to communicate to the public? And we, basically it was a brainstorming session. What are some of the obstacles to getting people to accept this message about living streets and what that means? And then how would we measure success of the program? So those were the three topics that we brainstormed. There was a PR firm that's been retained called, and their name is Feed the Dog, but they're basically taking the ideas of the group and going to start crafting messages about living streets and what that means. And again, every month, the staff, person from transportation, Mark Nolan, is going to be presenting the team with an idea or concept and getting feedback from our group. Anything further?
Very good, thanks for that update. Other comments from commissioners? Staff comments, Carrie, anything?
Yeah, just a couple of quick notes from the last city council meeting. The council did, they reviewed the Maryland subdivision, that was the three-lot subdivision, and that was approved. One of the conditions being that they come back and go for front yard setback variances, moving the homes closer to the street. Remember, there was a lot of concern about the homes being so close together. So they're working to revise those plans and that will be before the council, or the planning commission, probably in the next month or so. And also at the end of the meeting, the council expressed some interest in updating our subdivision ordinance to deal with this precise issue, tightening up some of our language. So I think we, that might be something that we, while we may start in 2013, maybe it's extra credit on our work plan.
Get double, double pay for that. Commissioner Platter.
Carrie, what was the result in that Maryland discussion? Part of it was the lot sizes for the 500 feet, did they, the medians and other things? Do you know where, where is that? That, those have to be, go back and be measured or where is that discussion at now?
In one of the lots, there was a large pond that was included in the calculations, and that pond is owned jointly by the 11 homes that surround it. Really, if you take the strict interpretation of our ordinance, that pond shouldn't have even been included anyway because it's, it's completely underwater, and our ordinance excludes that. So they're, they're rerunning the calculations, the median will in all likelihood go down.
And then I understand the, the Indian Hills one was continued and it's going to be taken up, is it, this coming Monday?
Next Monday, right.
Commissioner Carr.
Carrie, there was an email that you sent to us, it was for information. Was that necessary to discuss at this meeting or not? I can't recall.
It's not, just for your information, the, the sender of the email requested that I send it to you, so I did.
Anything else, Carrie? Okay. We're at the adjournment portion of the meeting. I would entertain a motion, Commissioner Carr? Oh, no? Commissioner Fisher, our newest member.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned, thank you.